I'll call the board of November 19, 2020, video of Mayor and Council. I'd like to call Councilman Ben Thor. Bill Brooks and Brett, if you can join us.
Good evening, I pray that we have gathered here tonight to do the work of the city. I pray that Jesus will be with us. You know, Lord, there are these terrible signs for all people in our city, our state, our great country, the human world. But I'm going to need your help, who is, Lord, even among all of this, so on and on. That you are still in there, Lord God, and we're grateful for that. We pray, Lord, that you will be with our president, the leadership of our country, with every one of the men and women, serving forces of here and abroad, who say, be with their families during their holidays, and pray that you bless them.
May my presence be with you. My pledge is to defy the United States or America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the living, and just as all. Council, we've had time to review the minutes from the November 5th, 2020, regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? They were quite lengthy. If there are none, then it's our group led acclamation. We'll move on to item three, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Consideration bids for phase seven of the manhole replacement rehabilitation program. Daryl Hughes can tell us about this great progress and expenditure.
Good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. This first agenda item is for phase seven of the manhole rehabilitation program. This is our continuing efforts to evaluate and repair over six thousand manholes throughout the city. We put this out today, we had three responses. RPI was around American Fiber Technology and James Warren Associates. The low bid was RPI Incorporated for $151,695.25. We've included some maps in your package so you can see the areas that these manholes will be repaired in. You know, annually, we go out and limit our 150 to 200 manholes and we try to, you know, list the ones that are in the worst condition. And this is our proposal for this fiscal year. This wasn't a budget. And this is also an addition to the number of manholes that are repaired annually by our manhole and rehabilitation team that we got in-house. As you recall, you allowed us to purchase some equipment last year, so we've been putting that to use. And our guys are out there primarily during the winter months, October, November, December, January. They're out there repairing manholes and this is an addition to that number and request.
Council, any questions for Daryl?
How many did you replace so far, Mr. Gardest?
We repaired about 250 manholes. In-house, we've done about 30 since last year. But the project has, on average, we've done 35, 30 to 35.
How much will this right here, how many will that cost?
This is about 34 manholes this year. And, you know, we try to keep it under the budgeted amount that we put out and we anticipate what the costs were going to be. Actually, they came in quite a bit lower this year than they have in the past. So, you know, we do have some reserve capacity. And if you would notice on that agenda item, we asked for additional 20% contingency in case we run into some additional repairs after we beneath the.
So you're starting to take on some of the toughest of access ones, right?
Yeah, absolutely. We want them to get the hard ones.
PD wants it now.
That's right.
All right. Any further questions for Daryl? If not, I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve this request just presented.
Thank you. Second, all in favor, show hands. Unanimous? Thank you. Move. Item B is the consideration of agreement for engineering services for the inflow infiltration action plan as required by the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. Daryl, please will again present.
Oh, yes, sir. This is a agenda request to reserve the services of our engineering to perform our inflow engineering action plans required by the consent order that you received on August the 11th. And we, we had several firms listed on our pre-qualification list. Bard has performed these services in Savannah, and Macon, and the Atlanta area. And they seem well positioned and they are, they had product that they had presented to EPP in the past. And we felt that they would give us the best opportunity to meet our deadline. That's what's given to us by the Environmental Protection Division. You know, this ionized plant, this is something that the department's been working on all along. And we have crews out there also popping manholes. So far this year, we've looked at probably 250, 300 manholes. And as a matter of fact, we have a crew out there doing all of our creek crossing before we have manholes or sewer lines, one across waterways. So that was also identified in the, in the EPP plan, but we were already against that. We have about 90% of those complete to date. And we have a deadline to get those into the state by the 1st of December. So we're well positioned to meet that deadline.
Council, any questions? Here you go. Not only entertain the motion. It's buzzing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor, show hands. Thank you, Daryl. Daryl said, "What I see, consideration for request to purchase huge lateral launch inspection equipment for utilities departments." This is quite a, quite a device.
Yes, sir, this is. This is, again, part of our efforts to evaluate the sewer collection system. This camera allows us to not only monitor the main lines, but also the lateral lines. Much of our inflow infiltration is coming from lateral at the wall to the property side of the main. Today, we've been unable to access those mains. This camera allows us to not only go up the main, but it also, it also allows us to track the camera. We can program in a frequency for this camera to generate either 415 megahertz or eight megahertz, which is, which coincides with our locating equipment. So as the camera is tracking on property, we can follow it with our locators and identify exactly where it is. It helps our homeowners when folks get ready to move, either a mobile home, or get ready to build their new, a new spin house on a piece of property that they often can't find with a lateral. You know, our burden says it's the homeowner's responsibility, but we try to get out there and have them to identify where it is. So we'll put our camera in. We can, we can see the lateral, but we never really could tell them how far into their property that the lateral extended. This piece of equipment allows us to assist them, rather, to keep them from digging up a road, digging up their entire driveway or yard trying to find those ladders.
It's a great service for the citizens, thank you.
We also have a sole source letter in the packet. This is the only company that provided this device that was compatible with our existing camera, camera kit.
Any further questions for Daryl? All entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, if you move to approve, would wish it ever since.
Thank you. Second, Council, all in favor, show hands. Daryl, for you, like yielded the microphone, this is Pat. Would you like to take two seconds to brag on the hatch base and then?
Oh, yeah, well, yes, the hatch base is complete. We were out there this afternoon. The TD crew was out there wanting to get some footage of the base as well. So we've done the, we completed the performance test. It worked well. We didn't quite put 800 gallons in, but we put some flow in there to allow our pumps to cycle on and off and test to make sure it didn't work that well. But, yeah, this is a tool that we've been working on since we had that big rain in 2018 and finally it's come to fruition. And we feel comfortable that we're prepared for, for, you know, we never say never with this business, but, you know, given a similar event, we feel that we can certainly handle and keep all those flows on the property.
That was a proud, proud email you had on the next mark. And that was an amazing piece of engineering, which leads us to our next guest. Consideration for request for the selection of a consultant for design services for the Old Pineville Road widening project will lead back to all of our city engineers. That was fun.
Good evening. So the, the next three items are all consultant selections for the TIA project, which is T-Spot's project. We decided to take three of them in-house. And so we're choosing a consultant for each of the three projects. The first one is the consideration of request for the selection of a consultant for design services for Old Pineville Road widening. This project will begin at the current corporate limits of the city of Valdosta at High Creek. It will end at Gilharman Industrial Boulevard. We'll have to use improvements here with traffic and circulation there at Gilharman. It's about a .62 mile five-length section, replacing the existing two lengths section. For this particular project, we went to the engineering library. We, we chose Level Engineering Associates. He's pre-qualified and is important for DOT. And, and their fee for designing services was received in the amount of $152,500. We had programmed in the TIA project up to $600,000 for engineering design services, so it came in below that. So tonight, we're asking you to approve the selection of Level on Associates and your fee for design services. And I'll take any questions that you might have.
I have, I have a question. Old Pineville Road at Gilharman, near to crack the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that where we talk, Mike, because I was a bit confused about that. About exactly what is we gonna do and if we're gonna widen the portion that's getting the city delivered to go out to the interstate?
Yes, the portion that's in, in, we're widening the Old Pineville Road. Remember a few years back, before I got here, you widened the bridge down there? And what we're gonna do now is put a four-length, prepare it to Gilharman.
From there back to Gilharman?
Yes, sir. And then we're also gonna look at any improvements that should be made at the intersection with Gilharman, with the industrial part of the road that we have over the years.
And, and, and you kind of don't take it from the, from the south side of the, from the, from that to the, all the way to, all the way to. Would we both, please, would they have one consultant, they do the whole, they do the whole road? Instead of we doing our part and they kind of doing, just a question.
Okay. Well, let me tell you about that. It's one of the reasons why we chose our Level Engineering. I don't know ultimately which direction the county will go, but Level Engineering is, is the engineer for Lawrence County. And I would suspect that they'll probably end up working on that project. But I don't know that for sure. Actually, Mr. Levels here, I don't know if you can share it by any question.
It's tier two.
It's a tier two project, correct. These are all three, the tier two projects, and, and they'll be paid for with the T-Spot's funds.
Now, now, I, I, if I remember right, that, that DOT is gonna be in charge of all the T-Spot's projects.
Correct. If you recall, a few months ago, I came before you with the agreement for the TIA project and these three projects. And in that agreement, it talked about the process on which this would operate, which included when a consultant turns in an invoice, we, we have some paperwork that we fill out. We send it to TM, they approve it, and issue a check, and they mail that back to us. I spoke with them today, and they said it's normally a two-week turnaround in the time, time they get our payment request. So that will be the process. Also, there will be ongoing progress meetings with the DOT as the projects progress through the design.
Right. Any other questions for Pat on this item? For item A, I'll have an entertaining question.
We are commotioning with who to quit aid to save.
Second, thank you. Any second. All in favor, show hands. Two, thank you. Item B, consideration for request for the selection of a consultant again, design services for the South Patterson Street and Griffin Avenue intersection. Is that Pat, please?
Right. This, this next one is for, as you just said, South Patterson Street, Griffin Avenue. One of the main objectives of the project, the dead location, is to take out the angled approach and tie-in to South Patterson Street, to where it's a I U. We always try to prefer having the road come in there. At the same time, a little bit drainage issues in the area and, and those types of things. The, one of the important things to select and consult on this particular project, because I haven't coordinated with DOT, is that they wanted to make sure that they were certified for the work that we did. So based on that, we selected EMC as the engineer. They have done several TIA projects already, and, and so we went ahead with that. Tonight, we're asking to approve this selection of the EMC Engineering Services. Their fee was $90,700. And again, in this project, it'd be a program of $130,000. Take any questions you might have.
Do you, where do you live at, EMC?
Over there, I'll say, obviously. By the Mexican restaurant that's over there. Can't think of what the name of it is. It's a short food restaurant. I can't remember why it is terrible. But that's where they're at, there in the shopping plaza over there.
Pat, after we take the, the string that road runs there, then we're gonna look at putting the tractor right there. Because way down, you could look and you keep it very humble safely. So we're gonna look at putting the tractor right there.
As we do the design, we'll probably just go ahead and take a look and see a bit more and see as part of the design.
Any other questions for Pat?
Will we put that in writing? Are we gonna look at it?
I, um, well, yeah. It's important for DOT to do that.
I understand what DOT is, but I can see if you put it in, right, and then we can, you won't call and say, we got to ask DOT that, we got to write it. Yeah, we did ask DOT.
Okay. I will have it written. I will.
That's all I ask. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I'll entertain the motion, Natalie, because you're very busy motioning with the way it's being presented.
Second.
All in favor, show hands. And once again, then. Consultant fees, once again, consideration of consultant fees for the Baytree Road and Gordo Road intersection improvement projects. Pat?
All right. Okay, this particular project is for improvements unknown at this time at the Baytree Road and Gordo Road, trying to improve circulation through that intersection. As we've gone over the years, let me just say, and we're going to Wood Valley Homeowners Association, they've always had some concerns with that intersection and the Walgreens and the movie theater and people coming in and out and Bank of America and that type of thing. We've also, over the years that I've been here, we both, we have, we didn't know, but they've been built. The apartments down there at the end of Baytree, there's a lot of college students that go through there. And then, of course, you got the circle pay there on the corner. So there's a lot of activity around that intersection. What the idea is, is to have someone come in and look at it and see what type of safety improvements that we could make in that particular intersection. Earlier, in last, back in 2017, we had selected Kimberly Horn to go around and optimize all the traffic signals, look at the traffic signals and traffic patterns around, around the mall area. And they did a study and they had some recommendations at that time. Because of that, because of the fact that they're true traffic repeaters, okay, not just rated design consultants, although they do other consulting services, they have a very, very strong traffic division, and they happen to be the engineers of record for the Tiffany area of DOT. We've selected them to do this work for us. Their fee for services was received in the amount of $193,252. And again, this one came in under the program of about $2,407,000. I'll take any questions that you might have.
And you say all they're gonna do is attract excited for that area?
No, they're gonna be doing engineering design, but they're gonna be looking at traffic. That's the key thing. We're trying to fix traffic problems. So they're gonna do some analysis with the traffic. And in addition to that, they're gonna come up with a remedy to try to raise. Recall that our intersections, we bring them from A to F, okay? And what they're gonna try to do is put something in that's gonna give us a higher level service, work towards a C or a B or an A, try to get that to that direction. So there will be some improvements. So it'll be probably road widening and maybe different turn signals that go up. I just don't know exactly what it's gonna be right now. They'd have to do the traffic analysis and study first.
You have a one line and three comes up, $193,000 comes out of that 2.7 million that they have for the total, total project price?
Correct.
Good.
And if they have to do the widening and, and turners and all that stuff, is that part of this project?
Yeah, that's part of this project. Yes, yes, sir.
Will, will part of this design also include, like, entrance, exits to the mall and these other businesses too that are down beyond the intersection and so on? How, I guess my question is how far down?
Probably a couple hundred feet in all four directions, yeah, okay? So there could be improvements. You know, one of the things, and I just, I don't want to plan any CDs that might not come to fruition, but one of the things sometimes that they do in order to make them safer is they'll block off some turn movements to where you have to go down and, and turn around and, you know, especially if you've got a lot of cars. But some of the complaints that I've heard in the past is you've got people sitting there in a queue waiting to turn, and then you've got folks pulling out of Walgreens and other places, trying to conflict with traffic and making illegal moves. So sometimes they may put in a traffic barrier, concrete barrier, a low curve, so that folks can't make a turn that's dangerous. So I don't know what's gonna come out of it, but we'll go through a process in the design. That's what we're paying for. And we'll come out with this.
Will you give them all the authority to do this? Are you gonna be in this little group with them to, to look at what they're doing?
Yes, that's, that's, yes. Kevin Heinrich is managing the project.
You and Ruby Mench?
And Kevin Tyger, he manages.
Any other questions? All entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, would you approve this request that's presented?
Sure. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Pat. Move on to item five, ordinances and resolutions. This is a consideration of a resolution authorizing the city of Valdosta to apply for the Georgia Department of Transportation 5307 grant funding for 2022 this time. With issue our public transit system. Chuck Jenkins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor stated, this is just an authorization for us to apply for the next year's funding for the transit grant. It's more or less the same thing that we did last time. The big difference being this time is purely 5307. There's no cares element to it. So instead of it being roughly 100%, it's gonna be funded roughly 70%. So the city will be on a hook for about 30% of the transit costs for FY '22. I would have it taken. Any questions you might have?
I'd love to do our 80%.
Well, that was 80% last year plus the 20% federal. The way it's gonna work out this year, or next year, assuming that we go, as we are moving now with a third-party operator, the grant formula divides it into two pieces. There's a capital piece and an operating piece, and it's just arbitrary at this point how they put that 50/50. And half of it will be funded halfway, and the other half will be funded at 80/20. But then the state will kick in some additional funding on that 80/20 side. So the overall average should result in the city being responsible for roughly 30% of total.
And that was instead of the I-17, it's gonna be a full calendar year, correct?
Yes, sir. This will be a full calendar year.
All right. Council, any questions? All entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm picking motion. It will, who requests it?
Second.
All in favor? Council, thank you. Well, now we move on to the item six, the citizens to be heard portion of our meeting. We ask that you come forward and state your name and address, if you may have that for the record, and if you may follow up. Our followers require us, if you stay under three minutes, please direct all comments to council as a whole. I don't intend to engage individual members of council and debate. Are there any citizens to be heard tonight?
Mr. Mayor, Council, New York to Austin, Ryanes, and I've been heard a lot by these, by you, going, you electorally official that oversaw it at the office about New York flag, known with Valdosta, and all of its hall and near the places I'm not going to mention at the night. I just left the military base on the Hines Hill. That city respects the veteran, maybe because they have a military talent, I'm not sure. But when you travel to Valdosta and around the state of Georgia, Valdosta and Lawrence County is about the only major metro city that I know that does not fly a Georgia flag over the courthouse. The only one. Unless you go to Actonson County and Pearson and people know the history of that place. And it's sad that Valdosta got to be identified with the historical account of what happened in Actonson County years ago. I could say much more than is very negative about why Valdosta and Lawrence County possibly do not fly a Georgia flag over this city hall in the Southern judicial circuit. They are, they are there for the Georgia flag out here in front of this building, but I noticed recently it has disappeared for reasons unknown. Mr. Mayor, Council, I am a very humble person. I'm a very respectful person, what do you believe in that? I don't wanna go into the history of what I know. I could, and y'all are about to force me to do it, and it gonna be ugly for Valdosta. This is why I chose not to do it. I'm trying my best not to go down there, though. But I go way back. You see, I'm the one that went out to move out for space. When the people on that base thought that those in power, the wing commanders, did not fly, I mean, did not display a picture of President Barack Obama in 25th April, he won a election. I'm the one that went out there and talked to the wing commanders. I'm writing 10 books. You all are writing history. You are in my book already. Your name will be in the book, but somebody needs to know what we're doing here when it comes to, I'm in a women in uniform. It is indeed a disgrace, Mr. Mayor, and I wish somebody would stop it. I've already wrote to the governor, my auntie Camp, I'm hoping that he will respond to the cries of the mother and father. Thank you very much, y'all.
George Snaggy, are there any other citizens to be heard? State your name, Greg Moore.
Good evening. Greg Moore, 507, 478. I'm here tonight representing Harper and Tyger. And I want to introduce two new citizens to the captain and the mayor that are moving in. One is Charles Colkin, who's gonna be our sales, residential sales manager. And then Madison Gilmore, who's gonna be our residential sales executive. They're one of 10 permanent jobs that are coming to the city of Valdosta with Harper and Tyger. Also, we're gonna have 75 temporary jobs that'll roll through the year. We've got 11 more months on our, our business year. And then that will keep rolling as long as we're introducing residential fiber, which will be a $3 million a year investment into the city of Valdosta for the residential areas. a year investment into the city of Valdosta for the residential areas. So just wanted to introduce Charles and Madison to you guys. Thank you.
Welcome to town. Are there any other citizens to be heard this time? We'll close out this portion to you. Item seven, city managers report, I am conflicted. Which of our deputy city managers might come forward?
The city manager didn't have any to be on the agenda. I got lots of things to do.
Ready?
On me?
We'll move on to counsel comments. We'll start with Eric.
I will lay.
Move on down. Something is ever good for you?
Yes, sir. And you, you need a motion.
I'm gonna lay.
Two.
I'm good.
Good. Mr. Cody.
Christmas tree line, are we gonna have two Santa Claus or are we gonna have one?
Just one.
Just one?
We don't like.
Yeah, Santa Claus and there's Santa Claus.
We like to think we have a star of role, but you have Valdosta High School choir. We think that, that bunch is gonna blow everything away.
I just want us to have a Santa Claus that's helping and not run this good.
That's good.
Hi, Eric. Mr. Mayor, I, hopefully I can speak louder than some of you here. Last meeting, if we think back to Councilman Nor, Councilman Nor made a statement at the end of our meeting last time, and I like thanking for that. That, that stuck with me for pretty much the whole week, when he said, "A person in leadership," he's talking about something that a pastor said. And I wanna touch back on that, because those words were pretty powerful, stuck with me in my mind. Just go back to tell us that when we're in leadership, your words matter. When you, whether you're the mayor, city councilman, department head, president of a civic organization, president of a H O A, somebody saw something in you to put you in those positions. So with that being said, we need to be careful with what we say and how we say it, because our words carry a little bit more weight. So when we're having these discussions amongst one another on social media, texts, telephone calls, we have to be careful how we treat one another and think about how the perception, how it's gonna be perceived. We can't dismiss all the people who supported Donald Trump as racist, right-wing poos, because you have the entire nation out here that's maybe of white people that are thirty, forty, fifty years older than I am, that see the country that they grew up in change before their very eyes. And they're afraid. It's not that they're all racist, but when you do see racist behavior, we have to call it out. But not all of those people are racist. So we have to be careful with our words, because when we use those words, you automatically turn off a certain segment of our population, because they're not gonna listen. Because you calling them racist when all they wanna do is the same thing that we wanna do. They wanna raise their family, good-paying job, good schools, and educate their children. And on the other hand, we can't dismiss people that don't agree with us as left-wing socialist Marxist communists, because you've turned them off, because now we're no longer having a conversation. We're yelling back and forth at one another. When we take our words and sit down and just, before we send that tweet, before we send that text, before we make that, think about how it's gonna be perceived to one another. When you look at Valdosta, we are tightly committed here. When we look at everything we see on the news, we don't have those issues here. So we need to be mindful what we put out, because instead of us trying to let everything trickle down, trickle down from the top, how about we spread it out by showing people here that our local government can get along, our city government and our city school board can get along, our county government, our county school board can get along. When you see older black people celebrate the achievements of the first black president or the first African-American vice president, it's not diminishing the achievements of other people in the community. It's just that they've been told that those things would never be, those things would never be, those aren't obtainable goals. So it's not that they're thumbing their nose at the system or saying, "I got you." It's just a fact that when you look at some of those people, some of the things that they went through, that they would never have thought that they were ready to attain those goals. We have police officers and firemen that go out every day, not knowing whether or not they're gonna go home the next day, but they do it. They wanna go home, hug their spouse, pick their dog, pick their kids, and get ready for the next shift, and be left alone. We have police officers all across the nation, and if someone like me doesn't say all police are bad, I'm, I'm, I'm a sellout. No, I'm just telling the truth. We have bad policing, we have bad police officers, but all police officers aren't bad. We have to call out what is wrong, when it's wrong, and when it's good, we have to say something. Now, I'm gonna leave this. Nobody in this community thinks that the Biden administration is gonna be able to solve all the minority issues, no ones that I knew. But we have to think about, when we're in this public space, what attracted people to that party or what they were voting against. Be careful without words, be mindful, be kind. I'm gonna leave y'all with this. I don't know what we're gonna have to do, how loud we're gonna have to scream it, to let people know that COVID nineteen is still with us, is still very much killing people. And in our community, if we don't be careful, we're gonna start having to visit our lovers and relatives in hospitals outside of our community. So I want everyone to keep that in mind, be very careful, be very vigilant over these holiday, over this holiday period, and just be careful and mindful of the worst. I'm done with you.
Eric, wonderful. That same president, our first African-American president, Barack Obama, saw a video right now saying it looks like we can always solve these problems in America on a local level. He praised, did he praise the city councils and the county commissioners? He said, so I think he must be as frustrated with that machine up there as we are as well. Let's, let's turn it down on a national front, and let's turn it up on a local front. Thank you, Eric. Most of it. I've never taken a motion. To a juror, I have a second. All in favor? Thank you, everybody, for coming.
This is a get from Frank Press, George Austin Ryans, and it's been about eight years that they've been flying over government buildings in Valdosta County. I'm only one person on sixty thousand. One person on sixty thousand, many pastors, five generals, hundreds, and nobody's seen the lead of the flag in Georgia flag in this city and county, and in other fifty-nine states and cities across the United States. I am one of the veterans, a former military veteran, and I want to stop, but I will tell you, I'm a person that serves the people, and I cannot stop. Took an ocean obligation, with anger and hate, for my one, to defend this country against both blacks and Mexicans. Just before I'm out of the unit, I will not stand alone for your daughters and your sons and your mothers and fathers, and your uncles and aunties. I have a responsibility that we are, our American citizens in Georgia, as in other states. I appreciate the Brian P. Kemp, the governor of Georgia, in the process of carrying a letter and video to the Department of Defense and the Joint Chiefs of Staff, because I love your children, and I love those who serve in the armed force. Last time I said, I just happen to come back alive, maybe you and me, and let you know that I'm on air.
Now, move on to the item six, the citizens to be heard portion of our meeting. We ask that you come forward and state your name and address, if we may have that for the record, and then we may follow up. Follows requires that you stay under three minutes. Please direct all comments to counsel as a whole, and not attempt to engage individual members of council today. Are there any citizens to be heard tonight?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I'm George Austin Ryans, and I've been heard a lot by these, by you voting, you elected officials that the voters voted into office about no Georgia flag flown in Valdosta in front of City Hall and many other places I'm not going to mention them tonight. I just left the military base over in Heinzville. That city respects the veterans, maybe because they have a military town there, I'm not sure. But when you travel to Valdosta and around the state of Georgia, Valdosta and Lyles County is about the only major metro city that I know that does not fly a Georgia flag over the courthouse. The only one. Unless you go to Atkinson County in Pearson, and people know the history of that place. And it's sad that Valdosta got to be identified with the historical account of what happened in Atkinson County years ago. I could say much more that is very negative about why Valdosta and Lyles County possibly do not fly a Georgia flag over this City Hall in the Southern Judicial Circuit. Mayor Gayle did put a Georgia flag out here in front of this building, but I noticed recently it has disappeared for reasons unknown. Mr. Mayor and counsel, I am a very humble person. I'm a very respectful person, whether you believe it or not. I don't wanna go into the history of what I know. I could, and y'all about to force me to do that, and it gonna be ugly for Valdosta. This is why I chose not to do that. I'm trying my best not to go down that road, but I go way back. You see, I'm the one that went out to Moody Air Force Base, when the people on that base saw that those in power, the wing commanders, did not fly, I mean, did not display a picture of President Barack Obama in two thousand eight when he won the election. I'm the one that went out there and talked to the wing commanders. I'm writing ten books. You all are writing history. You are in my book already. Your names will be in the book, but somebody needs to know what we are doing here when it comes to our men and women in uniform. It is indeed a disgrace, Mr. Mayor, and I wish somebody would stop it. I've already wrote to the governor, Brian P. Kemp. I'm hoping that he will respond to the cries of the mothers and fathers. Thank you very much, y'all have a good day.
Item six, the citizens to be heard portion of our meeting. We ask that you come forward and state your name and address, if we may have that for the record, and then we may follow up. Follows requires that you stay.